Maya PAC, Maho PAC community, December 1st, 2020. Hope everybody had a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving. Certainly tough times the last, the last few weeks as our, as our numbers are increasing around us. My hats off to our, to our team of doing everything they possibly can to keep us in school and keep kids learning, keep people safe. What I'd like to do now is make a motion to open the meeting, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Adam. Second, Larry, I see Larry, all in favor? Aye. Would you please join me in, in the, saying the pledge? Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Again, again, Maho PAC community, welcome. And what I'd like to do right now is our special meeting for this evening. And what I'd like to do is turn it over to our, to our superintendent of schools, Mr. Anthony DeCarlo, so we can update us on all the, all the exciting events that are surrounding our community. Anthony, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you very much, President Mangan. And I hope everybody had a wonderful and hopefully peaceful and safe Thanksgiving. The purpose for tonight's meeting with the board, and I thank your board members for allowing myself and the cabinet to talk to you a little bit about what is happening with, as President Mangan mentioned about COVID-19 and what's happening with the, the new landscape kind of dictated by the governor yesterday and that impacts that we're seeing on our school, both short-term over the last number of weeks. And I'll have Dr. Stowell kind of give you a little bit, you know, of an overview of where we're at, where we've been, where we're currently at, and possibly where we're going. And, and as you are aware, what is happening is that the governor seems to be changing his protocols as we're going through this. And not to say whether that's right or wrong, but it has major impacts on what school districts can or can't do. So let me go back originally. If you remember at the beginning of the school year, the governor spoke about being in regions. And we were in region four, and that was basically the...
Mr. DeCarlo, we can't hear you. We can't hear you.
I just got a wind gust that Adam got, so I apologize about that.
You're still muted.
You're on mute.
Five to nine percent, we have to closely monitor, and then above nine percent, we'd have to do a pause. That subsequently changed, and then we went to zones, yellow, orange, and red. And as you know, there were a number of Westchester communities, Portchester, Osning, Tarrytown, Peekskill, that were put in the yellow zone. He then talked about testing, that you could test if you're in the yellow zone over a two-week period, 20% of your students and staff. If you are orange, you'd have to close down, and then you have to have 100% of your staff being tested. Now, when that was rolled out, we as districts talked about who's paying for this? You know, we are already financially burdened. Who is going to be paying for all this testing? And of course, all the superintendents got together, they spoke to some of their elected officials, some of whom had no idea. That's a whole nother discussion for another day. But anyway, so then he started to work with the counties and said, well, maybe the counties can help out in a partnership. And if they can have their licenses then given over to the school districts, we may be able to work something out. So we started on that path, and we're working with Putnam County. And Putnam is looking at, you know, getting some of these testing materials and, and working on the LSL. That's still in process. And then yesterday now, he changed it once again to now based on hospitalizations within each of the areas and zip codes or counties. And then he's going to monitor those numbers over the next couple of weeks. What he showed yesterday is we already have a surge. That's minus Thanksgiving and the Christmas holiday. So, you know, he's talking about we could have a surge on a surge, and he may have to put in what he calls a New York pause. So where are we at, and how does that affect the Mayapac Central School District? Well, of course, there's a couple of things. And like I said, I'll have Greg go over the numbers in a second. So as it stands right now, and I know a lot of people are looking at dashboards and saying, well, aren't we in a zone right now? Well, but the old zone might have been yes, but because it's now based on hospitalizations, we're not. And therefore, that's some of that confusion. He's also now reiterated that, you know, I'm going to look carefully, because if he's going to ask Mayapac to test, what are we testing against? Because it really should be what the infection rate is for the people of Mayapac. Because Carmel, don't forget, everybody, has two school systems. It's got Carmel, and it's got Mayapac. So right now, the only number we have to go with is the county number. So we're waiting for guidance on what that Mayapac infection rate looks like, because we'd have to then take our numbers and put it up against the Mayapac rate to see if we fall below it, so that we can keep our schools open. So let me just stop there for a second, because I think that's important for everybody to understand that it has become very difficult for us to follow the bouncing ball. And what is happening is the following, and Greg's going to, I'm going to send it over to Greg Knight now to let you take a look at numbers. But here's what's happening. Basically, the state who promised they would take care of contact tracing is no longer doing it. It's all falling upon the schools. And I have to tell you, this is unsustainable. It's unsustainable. I have building principals, assistant principals, working 24/7 on weekends. We had high school staff this weekend, on Thanksgiving Day weekend, who had to work on beginning contact tracing. It's unsustainable. It's really, really not fair. So what is happening is that now, basically, if you're in the room, originally, if you were six feet away, if windows were open now, everybody's out. So what we're seeing happening is more and more students being quarantined, but most importantly, we're losing a lot of our staff. And I want people to understand this, and I have said this before. It's, when I say staff, it's not just teachers. It's teachers, it's custodians, it's bus drivers, it's monitors, it's TAs. So we're in a situation right now, Mayapac High School, we can't open. I don't have a staff enough to open, because that's how many people are on quarantine. And what's going to wind up happening is, as other districts example this week, very similar to what happened at the beginning of the year, trustees, where we couldn't open because we didn't have enough staff, because some of our surrounding districts decided to do a pause and not open right away. Well, now the same thing is happening. Arlington, this week, closed down. Most of our teachers, and Deborah will go through this, most of our teachers live Arlington, LaGrange, up in that area, Brewster, and Lakeland. So that domino effect happens that we're already stretched to the max. If those schools now go on a pause, or they take weeks, I can't staff our buildings. And so that's what we're beginning and we're starting to see as we are going through, as the governor said, the most difficult 37 days. Okay? And I want people to understand this. We're seeing the surge right now, and that's as a result of the Halloween holiday. We haven't hit yet, and that'll probably be the next seven to 10 days on the Thanksgiving holiday. And we know what everybody's saying about people traveling and things. And then you have seven to 10 days after that, and then we go into Christmas and another seven to 10 days. So these are things that we as a cabinet and a leadership team and our unions have explored as we look to what that should be or could be over the next 37 days. And remember, our, our, our goal at the end of the day is utmost importance is the health and safety of our students and staff. So I'm going to turn it over right now to Dr. Stowell, who's going to kind of give you kind of the data behind what we're seeing, where we, where we've been, where we are currently, and what the projections may be moving forward. Thank you, Dr. Stowell.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. Can you all hear me, and can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So thank you, trustees. Thank you so much for allowing us to take some time out of your evening. I, I thought I'd drill down. Mr. DeCarlo did a really great job of summarizing what's going on in Albany, what's going on in SED, what's going on in Department of Health. I thought it'd be really important, most of the time, we were able to have conversations in the evenings was about a reopening plan and what we're doing. I, I kind of want to drill down into what is the COVID positivity, positivity and contact tracing? What's it like in the buildings? What do we do? What does our staff do? Particularly our administrators, myself, Mr. Tremblay, all the cabinet, all the assistant principals working tirelessly. I want to just drill down a little bit about what does it mean? I think the first thing is, when we all heard we were going to reopen, it wasn't our job to investigate, right? It wasn't our job to do contact tracing. We just report. Well, that was very short-lived. We are now responsible to do the initial investigation in the, in the Department of Health. As small as they are, the numbers are so high, they can't do a lot of investigation, if any. We just kind of coordinate with them, and we do the investigation. So here's what happens. I thought it would be really important to really focus in on what happens when we get either a report from a self-report, a staff or student or a parent reports to us that someone is COVID positive, or we get a call from the Department of Health that someone is COVID positive. The first thing we do is we coordinate with the Department of Health, and we try to figure out, were they in school? If so, when? When were they symptomatic, if they were symptomatic? We have to go back and trace back 48 hours prior to symptoms. If they weren't symptomatic and were asymptomatic, we have to trace, trace back where they were and who they were in contact with 48 hours prior to the specimen connection, uh, collection. And what we have to do is kind of retrace their steps throughout the day, from the minute they got on the bus, all the way to the time that they leave for 48 hours. And what we're looking for is what's called either close or proximal contact. And close contact means being within six feet of somebody who is COVID positive for more than an aggregate of 10 minutes within a 24-hour period. So it doesn't matter if you have a mask or not. It doesn't matter if a window is open. If you are enclosed within six feet for more than an aggregate of 10 minutes, you're considered a close contact, and you will have to be quarantined. A proximal contact is someone that is in a room or an enclosed space for an extended, extended period of time, regardless of how far you were from them, and regardless of whether all parties were masked or not. So what we have to do is like retrace all of this, their day. And if you can think about a high schooler's day, all the places they've been, their eight, their nine-period day, their lunch, their bus, we have to kind of recreate where they were and who was with them. We have to cross-reference it by who was in school or maybe not in school, decided to take a remote day, was out sick, what staff members were in there, who was covering what classes. As you can see, this starts to, it starts to compound to a very big investigation, which Mr. DeCarlo said, we were on the phone this weekend, and the high school team did a remarkable job at retracing the steps about one particular case, and that took them two days over the, this past weekend and finishing up on Monday. So that's what we're now required to do. We are the initial investigators. What happens after that, when we compile all that information, we're not done. What we have to do is we have to call or contact each individual staff member and student that is a close or proximal contact or their parent, and let them know that we're sharing their information with the Department of Health, that New York State contact tracers will call them. And as we said earlier, sometimes they call, sometimes they don't, sometimes it's three, four, or five days later. Our job is to put them on quarantine. We have been kind of, we didn't ask for it, but we've been anointed to tell them, here's your quarantine period, here's the days, here's when you'll be, you'll be receiving a call from a contact tracer. If not, what we say right now is kind of what you need to follow. The last thing that we do is, is, last couple of things that we do is we send that information up to the Department of Health, and they send it off, as I said, to the contact tracers. And then we notify our school community, working with the cabinet, working with that school community. And we have to also make decisions on the feasibility, as Mr. DeCarlo said, about can we have instruction that day? Do we have to finish contact tracing, which sometimes, depending on when we get it, requires us to close for a day or two, like we did on Monday, because we weren't done contacting everybody? We have to look at the health and safety. Is our staff members out? That we can't keep people health and, healthy and safe? Do we have enough bodies, people that can supervise our students? Can we operate our buildings? Do we have enough custodians to make sure that our, that our, all our mitigating and disinfecting factors are in play? And, and sometimes it impacts, could impact our transportation. Do we have enough buses and enough staff to drive the buses to pick up kids? So all of that is happening at a very quick pace, and we have to make decisions quickly, but also in a way that, you know, ensures everybody's health and safety. And the last thing we do, our COVID-19 coordinator, Mr. Billiu, he's tracking all this stuff. Because as I said, sometimes the contact tracers don't call, and someone will go out of their quarantine period, and we can allow them in. And the Department of Health has given us now the ability to allow people in if they've passed their quarantine gate. So he's tracking all of that, looking at open cases, closed cases. And I want to dive into a little bit of the numbers, but I certainly want to stop, because I said a mouthful, and I want to make sure that if there's any questions or clarity that I can bring to this discussion, I can, before we go into happy, what are the numbers?
But Dr. Stowell, I just want to, on behalf of, I, I know myself and let the community know this, the work that Troy, Billiu is doing, yourself, and Mike Tremblay, our liaison with Shannon Siegel from the Department of Health, and our building leaders, principals and assistant principals, it's just an incredible job. As you can see, trustees, the volume and the amount of work that has gone in to keep our schools open as long as we have is a testament to these, you know, ladies and gentlemen. It's, it's just absolutely incredible. And, and I think that they need to be acknowledged for the work that they're doing. It is a monumental job, and this has become our job, everybody. This has become our job. It's literally every day, every day. And I, and I think, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't give them a shout out to just the incredible job that they're doing. So again, to all the groups that I mentioned, individuals, thank you very much.
Well, Anthony, you know, this was to be predicted. Remember, in our August, September meetings, remember, we were questioning whether the Department of Health was going to be up to this task? And I think that you had spoken to us and said that, and said that they were putting on more people and, you know, and, and that they were, you know, that they, you know, seemed like they were, you know, motivated to, to try to work with this. But obviously, that's all, that's all dropped out. Have you spoken to the county executive at all, Mary Ellen O'Dell?
Yeah, so they have, similar to, I mean, we have our weekly meeting with the Department of, of Health as, as Putnam County superintendence, and Shannon is that liaison for the Department of Health for Putnam. The county has a weekly 3:00 PM meetings with the, the governor's office. And, you know, they are, you know, they're overwhelmed. I mean, you know, Greg has heard it, we've heard it. They're just overwhelmed. The volume and the amount of cases that they're handling every day, they just can't keep up on it. So it then gets full back to the, to the school districts, and that's, that's where we're at. And like I said, the next 37 days are predicted to be the most difficult for this entire year that we're going into, right? So I know we hear about the vaccine. The vaccine is going to be a long way off before, you know, all the adults are able to be able to get it. We're not even going to talk about kids as of yet, because that's a whole nother discussion. So at the end of the day, you know, we're, this is going to be here, this is going to be here, at least for the, probably the, the entire year. I think at the end of the spring and early summer, we'll get everybody vaccinated, but it's something that's not going away. But the most difficult period is coming up within the next 37 days. So I'll throw it to the board if they have any question.
If there's no questions, I'll kind of move on and go into the numbers. And I just want to echo, echo Mr. DeCarlo. Mr. Billiu and the building administrations have been working tirelessly, and we wouldn't be able to open as quick as we are, as much as we are, if it wasn't for them. And I also want to thank Shannon and the Department of Health. It's not the lack of trying. They are here for us. They answer the phone at all hours. They're just, they don't have the person power to do the work. So it's on us. So what's the impact? What does this look like? So we took a look at the number of positive cases we've had since September. And what we look at is we've had 27 students since, since September be confirmed lab positive of COVID-19, and we've had 15 staff members. If we look at the total number of people, individuals quarantined because of those positivities, we're looking at, since September, we're looking at 121 staff members have been quarantined. We're looking at 405 students have been quarantined. Now, some people have been quarantined twice, but an average quarantine, by the time we do contact tracing and notify them, is anywhere from 10 to 14 days. So if you even think about just 10 days, you have about 400 students at 10 days being quarantined. And quarantine means you don't, doesn't just mean you don't come to school, or you're a staff member, you don't just come to school. This impacts your life. You don't leave your house. You go home, you quarantine, you try to separate from your family, so that in the event that you are COVID positive, and right now, we're not seeing spread, as the governor said, we see it the same way, we're not seeing spread, but it doesn't mean it can't happen. You're supposed to take precautions in your home and quarantine. So that's a lot of days for people to be in their homes. So it, it does have an impact outside of school as well, on our staff and our students. So what, what we wanted to do is, is because we feel it a lot more in the last two weeks, we want to look at what's going on in the last two weeks, which is concurrent with Putnam County's rise in the infection rate. And what we found was out of those, out of those 15 and 27 respectively, staff and students, we're looking at 11 of those 15 staff members were COVID positive just in the last two weeks, and we're looking at 11 of those 27 students being COVID positive in the last two weeks. So we also look at, okay, in the last two weeks, how many people have we had to quarantine? 50 out of the 100 and, you know, 120 so staff that we had to quarantine, 50 were just in the last two weeks. And 158 of the 405 were just in the last two weeks. And if we look at it as a percentage of a whole, we're looking at 73% of our staff who were COVID positive, were COVID positive within the last two weeks. And we're looking at 40% of all students that were COVID positive, tested COVID positive just in the last two weeks. So if you think about the amount of work we had to do to contact trace just in the last two weeks, it's one thing if a case or two comes in once a week. It's another thing, like we had over the weekend, we had seven students and two staff members just over the weekend. So to give you kind of a sense of the volume of the work in the last two weeks, it, it really has compounded. So then if we look in the last two weeks of the percentage of quarantine, out of, in the last two weeks, all of the staff that were in quarantine, 41% of them were quarantined in the last two weeks, and about the same, or 39% of our students were quarantined just within the last two weeks. And remember, we've been in in-person instruction since October, early October. So just in the last two weeks, we're almost half of all quarantines for staff and students. And, and I think, you know, you know, here's the implication. The implication of that is all of our administrators focus all their time and all their energy on contact tracing, right? Staff and students are coming in going, when's the next time I'm going to get a call and be relegated to home? So we're hearing that from our staff, we're hearing that from our students. We saw, and I know Mike will talk a little bit about it when he updates, is that recently, we've seen a lot more students deciding to just go remote for a day or two, or their, their week recently. And we also had an uptick in the amount of students who decided to go fully remote, because they don't want to get caught up in contact tracing. And the impacts of being quarantined is, as I said earlier, like you're quarantined, you're kind of staying away from your family, being extra cautious, and you're not leaving your home. So if you're, you know, you're a working, you work in our district, and you need to go home and quarantine, and you can't go out to the grocery store, and you can't go out and make sure you, you get the things you need for your family, this is starting to impact our staff on that level, and, and our students too. There are activities that they may, whether they be in sports previously, or whether they be in activities, even if they're outdoors and somewhat safe, they can't, they can't really engage in those, because they're under a quarantine mandate. And this does have, the more and more we do contact tracing, the more and more we stop and start schools in a day or two or a week, and the more and more frequent it becomes, it really is having an impact for us, our staff members, to really give predictable cohesive instructional design, because they're starting to focus more on, you know, how do I make up? Am I going to get caught up in contact tracing? That we're finding that some of our staff are, or that's in the back of their mind, and that's going to, that's going to impact their focus on sound instructional pedagogy. And last thing we also know is that even though we're trying to get our students with more significant disabilities and our second language learners in more, the stops and starts don't help. So I, I don't have many solutions at this point, because I think there's no great one answer that's going to solve everything. But I think it's really important that we had a discussion about the implications and the impact of COVID positivity in our schools and contact tracing, especially in light of the uptick. So thank you very much. I appreciate the time. I'll stop sharing my screen and stop talking.
Any questions for Dr. Stowell as he finished his presentation? Any board trustee?
Question on, on that. Dr. Stow, the numbers that you showed about the students that were testing positive, those are all in-school students, or are they, are the offsites included in that?
It's, it's any student that is enrolled in Mayapac Central School District. So there's a handful of, or virtual students, or it just happened to not be there when they tested positive, but there's plenty that were onsite. You know, we found out after the fact, they were onsite and were positive, and just didn't know it at the time. So it's a mix.
Well, we have to do contact, you, your team has to do the contract, start the contact tracing for them as well, even though they're basically remote.
Yeah, I mean, it's much quicker, Adam, right? So, but we got to verify, you know, if they're full remote, we got to verify. We don't, we don't do contact tracing out of the school, so we won't say like, you know, did you go to the grocery store? Who did you talk to? That we don't have to do. We just have to do it for our schools. But there are some kids that it may have been a gold day, right? And, and they're a blue kid. And we have to trace back, and they may not have been there that day when we found out, but we do have to trace back and say like, well, when were you symptomatic? Now, okay, you were symptomatic on Wednesday, and I got to go for 48 hours. You were here Monday and Tuesday, now I got to go through everybody on Monday and Tuesday. So it's really like an investigation. It's really like tracing somebody's step. Like, hey, I lost my keys. Where was I? Who'd I talk to? It, it's really going back and retracing everybody's steps and where they've been and who they've been with.
I, I think it's an important point to illustrate to the public that it's not just the kids that are in school. People see them on a dashboard, they're full remote, but it still affects you and takes time for us to do that work as well. Because the question comes up about what, why, why do they have to close to do contact tracing? It just, it all rolls into one, and I think it's a good illustration of just how much work goes into it. So it is a lot of work, and it is a huge undertaking. So thank you for, for everybody that's, that's contributed to that and keeping things going.
Thank you, Vice President Savino. Any other questions?
Yeah, Dr. Stow, I got a question. So I know you talked about, you didn't see too much spread within the schools, but I just want to ask, from the, I guess, staff or students, with those cases, are we seeing any evidence with your investig, it's almost like an investigation? Are you seeing any evidence of spread within the schools? Is a student giving it to two, three, four of their peers? So we're not seeing that. Okay.
No, at, none. At this point, zero of these cases have been linked, and we work very closely with the Department of Health. We may be doing the investigation, but we're using them as someone to help us of like, oh, this is, most of them have happened, Tanner, quite frankly, whether it be a sporting event outside of a travel team or a family get-together, or somebody slept over, or, you know, a gym that they go to, or, you know, a family member came from somewhere else, and, you know, it, it's really been that kind of spread. We have not linked one case yet to inside our school spread.
That's, that's with staff too, right?
It is at this point. You know, again, you know, I think we've only had 15 staff members, right, that have, that have tested positive. And, and I've always said this is a mitigation plan, it's not a prevention plan, but we do know this. We do know staff and students have been onsite while they were COVID positive. And from that, we haven't seen one case that we could trace back to that.
Oh, yeah. Well, again, thank you to everyone who's involved in this. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Trustee McCracken. I'm going to now, I'm sorry.
Greg, they're also using, I'm sorry, they're also, they're also, you know, we also heard, you know, over the weekend with the Denver Broncos about the QB meeting and the, being in the room without their masks on. You know, again, I think it's extremely important to just, I think, I think some of our successes here have been is because, you know, we really have been gung-ho on and relentless of on keeping the masks, you know, on, you know, at, at all points during the day. You know, the mask breaks have been, have been very, you know, have been timely. But, but I do think that, I do think it's, obviously, it's working, because, and Greg, you could speak to it, Anthony could speak to it, but I think the importance of, you know, keeping the masks on in school, the, the teaching, the teachers keeping the masks on, I think makes a, I think it makes a big difference. And you can just see just by the, just what we've seen with the NFL the last few weeks, you've seen what happens when, 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 when the masks, when the masks come down, you know, bad things can happen.
And, and to your point, President Mangan, and I will tell you, he froze or I froze. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. I can't hear the president, though.
Okay, so I, I want to go, I want to, I want to give a shout out to our, our students. I have to tell you something. Our kids have been absolutely spectacular, and I have mentioned this every single And I have mentioned this every single week on my tweets on that, going back to September. Because I will tell you, some of the huge numbers that you're seeing on the dashboard for Carmel are because of huge parties that have happened in other high schools, not Mayapac. So that's credit to our kids. And I want to give them a shout out, okay? I'm talking about big, big, big parties in some of our surrounding school districts, which have led to huge numbers that you'll see on the dashboard. But to our kids, especially our, our high schoolers, you know, they're doing a phenomenal job. And I can't tell you how proud I am because we have not seen that. So to your point, President Mangan, it is a, it is a real tribute to our kids. So, so thank you for that. I'm now going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Michael Tremblay, who will talk a little bit about what Dr. Stowell said about the remote learning numbers, as well as if we have to go fully remote, how it is very much different than it was back in last spring. Assistant Superintendent Tremblay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiCarlo, and thank you trustees for this opportunity to update you on the topics. Ms. LaRocque, would you be able to allow me to share my screen at this time?
You're all set.
Thank you very much. So members of the Board of Education, as you may have heard, the governor announced that the battlefield is changing, and he did his best job to quote Sun Tzu and take a military approach to this. And we've used that exact paraphrase, that at any time we have to be able to adapt and overcome to make sure that we can keep our staff safe, our students safe, and to focus on the continuity of instruction. And you may have heard him mention that there could be an entire New York clause. And we wanted to take this opportunity to revisit some information we've shared frequently in the fall. But since we have been successful in being able to have our students in the hybrid model for as long as we have, we wanted to just update you and also share with the public if we are mandated or if we are placed in a fully remote learning model, the expectations or what that environment might look like. And just wanted to compare spring 2020, when the pandemic was, was on its first, the first stages in our country to the fall of 2020. And one look at the environment that the pandemic set, that shaped our teaching and learning plan in the spring, and how the environment in the fall of 2020 has shaped, and also feedback from our stakeholders shaped the new iteration of our teaching and learning plan for a fully remote. So if we look back to spring 2020, this was a, as it still is, a new virus that we did not know very much about. We did not know the impact on our students' households, on our staff households, on our administrators' households, on our community households. So we wanted to make sure that we put in place a flexible plan that would allow for, for the best possible teaching and learning environment in a health crisis. However, we did base the teaching and learning plan in a research-based model to, to add some credibility to that. And I do want again to thank our staff, our teaching staff, our administrators for, and our students for, in, in light of and in spite of overwhelming difficulties, they really stepped up to the challenge, pulled together as a educational community to deliver the best possible teaching and learning environment possible. So when we took a look at the plan we designed in the spring, we asked that our teachers and students have daily communication, that there is weekly assessment, there's weekly feedback, we use the Google platform to conduct a lot of the instructional delivery, that we have flexible expectation in terms of attendance, flexible expectation in terms of when students are to connect. We wanted to make sure that any communication was followed up very quickly. And we had, we had adaptive grading and reporting methods based upon the fact that nobody asked for this pandemic. It occurred during the middle of an instructional year with very little planning time to, to talk about grades and grade reporting. Compared to the fall of 2020, when we have a better emerging understanding of the impact of the virus and the, the nature of this virus, and also to the fact that we had the opportunity to reflect upon the spring, to learn from the spring, always seek to do better, to listen to our stakeholders, and also know that within state guidelines, we had the opportunity or the possibility of having to learn in three different modalities, whether that be fully in-person, fully remote, or a mixture of the two. And so now we see that our learning plan shape and have an emphasis on more live instructional activities to make sure that our students are connected, to make sure that they're connected not only with the, the, the content and the skills that we are asking them to, to learn and develop, but also connected to the educational community, be it their teacher, their classroom, when possible, sports, extracurriculars, those aspects. We also made sure that we, we put in place established instructional schedules, attendance expectations. We still use the Google platform, still want to be able to have that responsive communication if you do reach out to the teacher. And then we have shifted back to quote-unquote "normal" grading and reporting practices, depending upon the grade level, with one expectation, and we sent information out about this. Because our elementary report card is a standards-based report card, and we did make some shifts because of the, the, the impact that the spring had and making sure that our students, we did spend some time with some students catching them up to speed in the next grade level. We did push off our elementary standards-based report card reporting in a formal manner to two reporting windows rather than the traditional three. However, we are working at our upcoming parent-teacher conferences in December to ensure that we provide parents or guardians with detailed updates on the progress that their students have toward the reporting outcomes. Before I move on to, to some data to piggyback off of, off of Dr. Stowell's presentation, are there any questions on the expectations we have of the remote learning plan, or the comparisons between spring and the fall? I wanted to take a moment to, to share some cohort data as of this, this morning, when we talk about the number of students choosing or families choosing to send their student into a hybrid modality or a virtual modality. And before I go into numbers, I always, I always like to remind myself that these numbers actually represent individual students, individual decisions, that the numbers tell part of the story, but there are stories behind the story that have our, our students decide to go into one of these modalities. Or when we're looking at data such as number of students testing positive, staff testing positive, those are, those are individual people who are, have, have individual experiences. And I like to remind myself of that as I know everybody who is in education in one way or another does, does, does as well. So when we take a look at this, and we broke this down based upon by building, I wanted to share, in particular, the, the total number of students who have chosen to go virtual. We have allowed students and families to make decisions in a flexible manner to say, we are choosing to go hybrid, or we're choosing to go to remote. And we've allowed them some flexible, some flexibility in those decisions based upon our ability to continue to keep socially distanced in accordance with our plans and our physical plant, and also to make sure that we are responsive to the needs of households. So that's the balance that we've allowed in that flexibility. And just a key piece of data that I'd like to share is that if we take a look at today, we have 868 total students choosing the fully virtual or fully remote option. And that is approximately 25% of our overall student population district-wide. That is a, I'm sorry, 23% of our overall student population district-wide. And that is a change from the start of this cohort model, when we had approximately 14 to 15 student, percent of our student body choose the fully virtual population, or fully virtual modality, excuse me. And then an additional piece of data that I'd just like to share with you that, that we are looking at that isn't necessarily related to this, but does tell a different part of this, another part of the story, is we took a look at, knowing that students still have the option to not come into school and still participate in learning activities. If you, if you remember from our hybrid learning modality, students have the option, whether it be for failure of a health screen or for circumstances in their household, they do have the option to call in on any given day if they're in the hybrid model on their in-person days and say, I'm not going to come into school, the parents have the, have to call in. My son or daughter is not going to come into, be present in their in-person learning today. We are going to connect virtually today. And we, we count them as, as, as present if they make that phone call and they are participating in the, the remote learning activities. And so we wanted to take a look at that data because that's telling too. Because it's not necessarily a family saying, because of what's going on, I'm going to pull my child out and we're going to go full virtual. There is that other option to say, for right now, I'm going to make the shift to a virtual learning environment so I don't have to go into school. And what we took a look at is the week before Thanksgiving. Now, we all know in education, we all know we have children in, in school. That week before, week before any major break is kind of an anomaly. So we will be running this data frequently to, to make sure it's on our radar. But what we took a look at is the number of students who remained in our system in the hybrid cohort, in the hybrid model, either a blue or gold cohort, but chose to stay home one or more days during that week. And we saw that and learn remotely. Not just that they were absent, but they, they let us know that they will be learning remotely that day, not making the shift to full virtual, but I'm going to just connect remotely. And approximately 23% of students district-wide made that decision for the week of September, I'm sorry, of November 16th. Now, that is, now, you have to also remember that the blue cohort that week was in for three times, the gold cohort was in three times. So the, the impact on an individual student, depending upon what cohort they were in, meant that they could have been absent, not in school, not absent, but not in school presently, a number of days that week. And, and we share that just to give you a, a better understanding of how decisions are being made at the household level as we, as we transition through the school year and as we see the pandemic move on. So I wanted to share that data. I'll yield any questions or comments at this time, and I appreciate the opportunity to update you.
Mr. Tremblay, the, the numbers that you showed for that period for virtual versus in-school, does the virtual number reflect the number of students, say, a grade was, had to go full remote for, for two weeks at either, at any of the schools, something to that effect? Like the, the team, the team at the middle school?
Would show that at an individual level because we do count fully virtual students. We, for safety purposes, we count them as present remotely because attendance does a number of things. It also tells us who's in the building if we have an emergency drill. So we wanted to find a way that we could accurately report attendance. So any student, for whatever reason, that was home virtually learning was marked present virtual or present remotely, which would include, Mr. Savino, any student who because of a, a quarantine order or a closed building or grade level or class, they would be home learning at that time, under that, that attendance code as well.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. I just, and to, to double back to the numbers that are on the screen, the 868 are stu-, are families that chose to go full remote. It doesn't include kids that were hybrid that got caught up in quarantine. That is the families and students that chose, we're going full remote, we're not coming in.
The present remotely designator would apply to those, those types of indications.
A question on the fully remotes. Did we do any survey as to any reason why they chose that other than the health issue? Was there anything else prevalent?
We didn't ask formally why individual, why households would do that. It, it just didn't cross our mind at the time we were doing it. We do, most often times, there is anecdotal information shared when they do make a request into the principal, such as we, we, we have a health concern arise. We're pleased with what we see from the virtual. I've had parents call me, and before they go to the buildings, they say, we're pleased with what we see in the, in the, with how we're providing instruction to the, the students who are at home and they make the decision, we're going to go fully virtual. So it's, it's, it's a number of different reasons, but we did not conduct official survey data on why that decision was made.
Trustee Simone, I can tell you though, that a number of parents did share with me that both for Thanksgiving that we just saw and the upcoming holiday, that they will go remote because they do not want to have to have their child quarantine for the holiday, whether that be that, you know, they don't want them to have to be in the house, or they may be traveling. So we're definitely going to see an uptick over the next X amount of weeks because of the fact that, you know, they don't want to have to get off, caught up in a possible quarantine. I, I think if you saw also an article in the Low Hud recently that talked about not only our girls, but, you know, they, they, they shared a story of a young lady from Pearl River who was completely remote, went in one day to take the PSAT and wind up getting caught and then could not play soccer. So, so I think we also need to be prepared because, give kids credit, that, you know, you're going to see that tick up if we do have a winter season. So, you know, it's the reality of what we're dealing with. So, you know, to your point, Trustee Simone, those numbers are going to definitely kick up over the next, you know, month and a half, as parents are making some decisions based on their own personal issues when it comes to celebrating, you know, the holidays, whether that be with family on their own or that, that's traveling. We're definitely going to see a continued uptick.
And to build upon what Mr. DiCarlo was explaining, I wanted to see what the buildings looked like when we, when we were, when we were starting to see this trend. So the week before Thanksgiving, I took some time to walk the buildings and saw, and spoke to the building leaders, but also saw the fact that there were some hybrid classes with one student in them in particular, and the majority of the students connecting remotely. And talking to the building leaders and asking them their perception. And they echoed what Mr. DiCarlo said, is that they've heard from many parents that the, 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 the possibility of getting caught up in contact tracing was, was one that they did not want to risk sending their children into school.
Again, I, I really want to reiterate this because it's very important. We've been with, this is COVID, and we started with March. This is the first, and hopefully, God willing, only holiday season we're going to go through it. But this is what you're seeing, right? Whether, whether we like it or not, people are going to get together. People are going to travel. And that's the impact that you're seeing across the country. And, you know, Mayapac is a microcosm of what's happening. So these next 37 days are going to be a surge on a surge. There's no question about it. And, and that was the purpose for us to be able to give you as a board, a trustees, an update on where we're at, you know, give you the data, let the public know. And, you know, we thank you for giving that, us that opportunity. You know, and these things will impact, you know, things moving forward with testing and, and what that looks like and, and personnel who does that, which I think, you know, we're going to have to have a separate conversation and executive about that. You know, we also have some other things to look at that could impact that are personnel items. So President Mangan, I throw it back over to you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. DiCarlo, and to the entire team. Just amazingly difficult times. And, and we just, you know, continue with, continue with what we're doing and, and, you know, know that we're supporting you 120%. So we'll just, you know, we'll get through this together, I'm sure. Right now, what we'd like to do is we have some additional housekeeping that we have to do. What I'm like to do right now is wish the, our Mahopec community well, stay safe. While we're going to go into executive session to discuss some of the ramifications that, that you, that were outlined here today. So with that, what I'd like to do right now is again, wish everybody well. And could I get a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Ray. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Adam, I saw Larry. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you again, everybody, stay safe.